Gentlemen, it is 5:30, so we'll go and get the meeting called to order. I'd like to thank everybody for being here for our August fourth meeting. It's like there's a meeting every other day, so we appreciate you being here with us tonight. We do have a fairly lengthy agenda, but most of the items should move through very quickly, so I would like to say thank you for being here. Announcement wise for the community, anybody that's paid attention to social media over the last few days or was in County over the last few days, we did have several storms. But I do want to commend our 911 and our fire department for the work that they did. We had two structure fires both break out at the same time. And while putting those out, we had a major storm blow through the community that caused the trees to go down. So I'd also like to commend our road department, Kirk and his staff for coming out. I know Sloan's assistant actually came in to help out in the 911 center and helped out tremendously. So we had a very busy weekend in the public safety and public works world. And I just want to say thank you all for all that you did. I know it wasn't an easy weekend, both the physical and emotional and all the wear and tear. And also I'd like to thank our neighbors to the South Cherokee County came up and assisted them, both those fires as well and all of our volunteers that came from Bethany St. Albion, Big Canoe and several others throughout the county that showed up and assisted us. So I just want to commend the incredible work that everybody did and be thankful that we only had the one injury in the wire from overheating.
There was one firefighter.
One firefighter that was overheating and then one injury in one of the structures that she's been so. As we go into saying our prayer tonight, if we could remember the one victim that had injuries that's still in the hospital, I appreciate that very much. So with that, I'd like to ask Mr. Kirk Anderson if he would open up their invocation of prayer and then I'll leave us in our place of waiting.
Let us pray. Thank you, Heavenly Father, for letting us gather together here with your faithful friends and make up this community. Please, Lord, pass for your protection tonight over the ones that served in any capacity in the county and the country. Please, Lord, be with the ones that were injured over the weekend throughout the fire, lady that was in the fire. Please, Lord, watch over these proceedings. Let us have your hand touch them and lead us and guide us, make good decisions. Let us serve this community in the best way possible. In heavenly name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I plead. For the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So the first item on our agenda tonight is the approval of our agenda. Do not have any amendments before me. Does anyone else have any that I've got nowhere? So with no amendments, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as it's presented?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
With the approval of the agenda, we will move on through to the next item. It's our employee recognition. We do have to open up, flip the order around a little bit. Usually I do the years of service first and then open up, but I'm gonna have Daniel Reeves with the Tax Commissioner's office, our tax commissioner, if he wants to come up and he has an employee recognition.
So we want to thank the board of commissioners for allowing us to do this. We, this is something that we give to the board based on merit. And this employee who was also the winner of the last quarter. And where she, we rotate our workstation every nine days. So nobody sits at the same place all the time. And the place that she's in is actually very difficult to win because you're the last one down the line. But she's won it the last two quarters. So she's, like we said last time, she's very aggressive in her effort to get customers. You know, she'll yell from one side of the room to the other to ensure that she gets those customers. You know, from the phone to everything that we do, she jumps in there and she does it. And we want to let her know that we appreciate her by naming her the employee of the quarter for the second quarter, Mrs. Mary Gem Diller. Getting that award, we want to honor her with a certificate from the bragging rights that they brag against each other with there in the office, $50 gift card and a get out of jail free card, which gives her a day off to pay. So I think that seems to be the main agenda. So thank you all very much.
The next time she comes up here, she's gonna get a speech. She does two.
You know, I almost told it.
On the third one, you've got a speech.
I almost told it.
Next up, we do have a 10-year service. I know 10 years in most government jobs is a lot. 10 years in dispatch world is a lifetime. So it always messes me up when we get these certificates that have full names because I look at the full name and I'm like, I don't know Matthew. And then I realize that when I see the middle name. Mr. Dylan Finley is then with the 911 emergency communications for 10 years. I'd like to have you come up to the people that's 911. And if you can hit Chris, if you come with me, we'll get there to notice for a picture. So. Congratulations. He's actually really good at what he does too, so. I want to get on the other side.
Sure.
Or do you want to try to hide and get out of?
Yeah, everybody looks fine.
Awesome. Thank you. Next time on our agenda is actually a public hearing. Last month was the first month that we've actually utilized a change in our ordinance that was created a few months ago. When an applicant wants to downzone their property to a lower density zoning, then they can actually go on a little bit faster process and the hearing is actually conducted before the board of commissioners without appointing commissioners and makes that process a little bit quicker. So the first one we have tonight is a request for a change in land use classification downzoning on Swan Bridge Road. It's RZ-190751. Our request to move 92.51 acres from urban residential to a state residential. So I'm going to turn the floor over to Mr. Charles Reeves and let him go through and present.
All right. Good evening, commissioners. This case is referenced as RZ-190751 of the applicant. It's 1893 LLC Ryan Almer. His property is located in the area of Swan Bridge Road, Talking Rock. Currently is on urban residential. The applicant is requesting a downzone from urban residential to a state residential. Total acreage is 92.51. Parcel number is referenced at 018001. Again, the intent of this request is to obtain a lower density of housing for subdivision. You'll see the location on the zoning map and it's surrounded by Ag and RR and what have you, pretty much an area that the characteristic of this is pretty much rural, low intensity. And this is character in the comp plan. Character area is labeled as big tree and big canoe. And again, some of the characteristics of this area is for low intensity development and for to maintain this rural nature. When considering a downzoning request, it's important to assess how properties would be affected by the proposed change. Downzoning should be justified with reasons such as preserving, community character, reducing traffic congestion, protecting the environment and addressing infrastructure limitations. After reviewing the staff's findings, it has been determined that the subject property meets the criteria for downzoning. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the request to rezone the 92.51 acre portion of land contained on parcel 018001 to the ER estate residential zoning district.
I'm gonna back you up. I know it's listed stating that's big tree, big canoe, even developed. I believe that's supposed to be under just the rural residential and the comp plan. That's why I was pulling it back up on the opposite side of the county from the big tree, big canoe. So we can get that on the record. I think that's in the.
Let's get that on record. And if I may add, this comp plan is kind of vague. I'm gonna fix some things on here. But with that, with that character, it's similar to the big tree. Just wanted to make that correction.
All right. So I know Mr. Almer is here. I'd like to open it up to Mr. Almer. If you've got anything you'd like to add to Mr. Reeves' consent, the chance that you heard.
Well, Charles did a really good job. Hard to follow that. So it is currently zone ER, which allows, I believe, one house per acre. And so we want it downzoned to ER, which means three acres for four houses. So, you know, and even then, I don't think there would be that many houses on these lots of the characteristic of land and the way the topography lays, I don't see any way that you would actually get that. You know, it would be a quick mess, be something like 60 houses, that's pretty good work. So I think what'll actually happen with this property is you'll have like family compounds where mom and dad might come in and buy a lot and they're larger lots for the most part. And then, you know, a few years later, they might split off a lot for a son or a daughter or something like that. So I kind of, I don't know that for a fact. That's how I kind of see that working. So that's what we had in mind. I think the neighbors would agree, they probably don't want to have one house per acre. So that's really all of that.
Okay. Y'all have any questions? I don't have any. As far as for public comments, any, I would like to speak in support of the vote. I'd like to speak in opposition. I'd like to vote for if you hear you call up here and state. With no public comments, we will close that portion of the public hearing. We will have that on the agenda in the rezone portion of the agenda to vote as we move on through. So I'd say thank you for coming and being here with us and we'll get to yours a little bit later. Thank you. Next item is another public hearing. So as we close out the first public hearing, I would like to call the order to second public hearing. It's the presentation of capital improvement special district ordinance. This is an ordinance, we actually did a public hearing, I believe it was three months ago in our board meeting, where we reviewed the Dawson County ordinance to go through a review of way in which that was presented. I know one of the attorneys from the North Nevis County made that presentation for us.
Aaron came and presented.
We have also had a follow-up discussion during the work session on that. So I know that way, anything that was presented, we could discuss anything there. The agenda item for the public hearing, I know that the ordinance draft was provided in your packets for you to review. The changes and the only changes, the purpose of the special capital improvement district would be to provide a way for property owners to petition the board of commissioners for certain, creation of certain special capital improvement districts in which qualified capital improvements can be made through authorized qualified capital improvement projects which are wholly or partially funded on special fees assessed through applicable taxes levied on those affected property owners only. Since the presentation, I know the original presentation using strictly the data, it was in the Dawson County, 75% was the threshold for effective property owners in the petition to prevent the possibility of having seven and a half homes out of 10. We went with 80 so that it could actually be rounded up in, given that we had less than 10 random potential without being split. 100% of a special approval threshold for effective property owners for dedicated property to the county. Special fees and assessments may be levied in addition to annual taxes. The life of the qualified and capital improvement projects is established to be 10 years, so this would not exceed a 10-year project if it was passed. Projects must be publicly owned, meaning that they would have to be willing to transfer that prior to any funds being expended on those projects. And qualified capital improvements can include almost any capital item except for sanitary sewers. That way, in addition to road paving, if there was ditch work, drainage, anything like that, the deed to the included as well would be included. And then it would be administered by Public Works with the assistance of the Director of Administration. That way, our Public Works Director and the Director of Administration would administer that process of a petition and application and working through the courts to get those all prepared and ready before it's presented to the board of commissioners for the final decision. Essentially, the overall purpose, just to restate it from the prior, is for private road subdivisions, private road communities that did not have established HOA or established funds to get their roads to the condition to be able to get those transferred into the county, is to create a way in which they can have a special district created where they can pay in additional for a period of time to raise those funds to get the roads to the standard required for it to be adopted as a public road county. So that way, they're not just continuing to deteriorate, but it gives a way that they can contribute this more. We have had a handful of communities that have reached out for a request of something similar throughout the county. We do have one later on the agenda that was one of the ones that had reached out and then they decided to pay for their project themselves and got their road up to standard. So we'll do what that is. That is the overall summary. I know we've discussed it kind of multiple times in multiple meetings, but I wanted to kind of give a highlight summary in the public hearing portion and give you guys a chance first if you have questions to present those. I know we have both the Public Works Director and Director of Administration here as well. So if you have any questions.
Did we ever decide or settle it up? I was reading through this and I'm trying to read through it again. I read through it before, but I'm confused. In that 10-year window, maybe we'd actually begin the project.
It would be depending on the scope of the project and the availability of funds. So it gives the window where it could be further out, but if the funds are available, then it can be done on the earlier end and we'll be able to do it earlier rather than later. Because those estimates for the price estimate would change over the course of time. So the earlier the better, but it would depend on the availability of capital funds to be able to do so. You have any questions? With that, I will open it up for public comments. For me, from the public, I'd like to address the board. Sir, if you could just state your name and where you live.
My name's Scott Pachetti. I live in Eagles Nest. And we were talking about the specialized tax district for our neighborhood. And I'm sorry, I'm not great at speaking, but I'm trying. But it says the roads are, it's one way in, one way out. And the developer, he built this neighborhood 30 years ago. And when he left it, I guess, and he owed money on the neighborhood apparently and then he dipped out. And that neighborhood is, the roads are horrible, one way in, one way out. When he started the neighborhood, he had like four houses or five houses, and then it turned into 80 houses now. And the whole neighborhood's like been fighting it for 30 years. And there's a bunch of old folks that's lived there that have no patience to be able to talk and try to negotiate. So now I'm trying to do my best to do what I can to help, you know, try to move something along. Because it's got to the point where the people that have been paying in to try to keep the roads where you can get it out, they didn't move. You know, there's a lot of people with money in that neighborhood. So, you know, I put a lot of money into the roads, you know, keep them up. And a guy named Randy, his house burnt down. And he was, he had a bulldozer, was putting, you know, putting rock out there, you know. And he had to move his house burnt down. And then it's just like, we were just kind of, we got our hands tied, you know, not knowing what to do. And all these people were like, well, we already paid taxes, you know. But they don't, they don't have no understanding that the roads are private, it's private land. And I'm trying to explain it to them, but it's really, at the end of the day, it's just not fair, you know, because, you know, we paid this land, the land. And it's like, what do we do, you know? We're stuck. And everybody has the money to fix the roads, you know, but we want to, you know, we're more than, you know, happy to turn it over to, you know, the government, they'll help us out. And it's just gonna be, you know, if you do do a special tax district for it, I would ask, you know, if you could at least to make it more possible to stretch it out to where it wouldn't be so expensive on the people that live there, you know. So, I mean, it's just bad. I would ask you all to go out there and just look at it.
I've actually drove out and wrote him a note that our Public Works Director, when he was trying to gather some rough idea, asked him, it's barely home, it's been out there as well. And it is deteriorating. And it's the difficulty of private roads when people purchase homes and not understanding if it's private or public. I wish the state would pass a law requiring real estate agents to have it play in on loud speakers when they came in so people understand what's there. But I know sometimes that doesn't.
It's bad. It's bad. It's, we're worried that if it rains, you know, that if one good time, the roads get messed up like it was last year, you know, we couldn't get in and out of there. There are people getting stuck in the mud and, I mean, you gotta go to work. And you got, you got, you know, if there's a fire or an ambulance or, so we got emergency vehicles, you need to get in and out of there, you know. You got Amazon coming in and out, destroying the roads all the time. I mean, it's, I got this old man, I got this old man and he's like, you know, we seem like we're in an island, you know, on the backside of the corner of the county. And, you know, all the time we're picking scouting, picking scouting is when we have to pay taxes. And I was explaining to him, you know, that's like that kind of patience that the old folks have out there, you know, they just, they just don't have the patience for it. So I just ask, you know, it gives, you know, consideration of the understanding because it's just go there and look at it. It's just bad. It's real bad. It's, uh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments? Anyone else have anything you'd like to address? You guys move on. With that, we will close the public hearing. We do have it as an agenda item to consider as we move further into the agenda of the meeting. So we will close this portion of the agenda and move on to the next item, which is under a consent agenda. We did have one proclamation on July the 26th that was signed to keep America beautiful and it's a pledge for keep America beautiful. That was done with the staff that would keep Pickens beautiful, came in and that proclamation was signed. Make sure that was put on the record. No old business to discuss in the meeting, so we'll move into new business. First item under new business is consideration of approval of an IGA for an AMR pole on Roper Park with the City of Jasper. This is a pole that was put in place last year, actually. The City of Jasper has contracted with a company to read their meters remotely, so there is a tower, a pole that was placed in front of Roper Park. This IGA is just to establish their liability for that pole and to establish kind of the parameter that it ends what's there and that there won't be anything. The only exception, the length of the pole is 80 feet, but we wanted to make sure that the antenna sticking above the pole would be factored in. So under the obligations portion, it does state that they have 80 foot plus to a fixed antenna that's on top of it. And this is simply instruct them with agreement to provide for that to be possible. So with that, I would like to open up for a motion. I'll throw it to the needs chairman to sign an agreement with the City of Jasper for the placement of that pole.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion or questions? No discussion or questions, all in favor? Then the closed. Next item on the agenda is the consideration approval of adoption of roads within the Dogwood Trace subdivision, contingent on successful property conveyance by deed. This is resolution, as we've discussed before, the residents in the Dogwood Trace subdivision, which comprise of Chapewee Place and First Drive in Sawyer Lake. The subdivision is off of Camp Docks on the southwest portion of Pickens County. They were able to pay for the resurface, the final coat resurface as a community. Mr. Anderson has already went out to inspect and verify that everything was there. They have submitted or written a request for the county to adopt those roads. The community is built out, so it's beyond 75% is built out. They have also remained compliant as an HOA with the State of Georgia. They do have active compliance status as an HOA with the State of Georgia. The only reason that it does have a contingency is they do still have to have a vote amongst the members of their community. I know that we've received everything, but their vote hasn't officially taken place. So we just added the contingency in there that that one step would have to be the proper conveyance, and that's required for the proper conveyance of the property. Roads have been checked out, they're in good shape, fresh coat on the top and verified that they have met the requirements for them and for ordinance to meet all county standards. So with that, I'd like to ask for a motion to authorize the needs chairman to sign the resolution adopting the roadways in Dogwood Trace subdivision. How many roads is?
Seven.
Second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor? Aye. Then the closed. That being placed. This one actually has a place for all three others, so that's why I followed it between the track and signature. Next item on our agenda is the consideration approval of the purchase of two Braun Chief four-by-four ambulances with Stryker Stryker systems. We do have an opportunity, and it has been one of the issues that we faced, is finding the availability of ambulances without waiting for a year for them to be delivered. Chief Braker has reached out and these will actually be available in October. So we've had a significant need for ambulances over the past several months. The total purchase price for both units with everything included, including the Stryker Stryker systems, is $922,335.60. This will be a SLOST item, so out of this public safety SLOST, but it would be at the request of authorization to approve the purchase at market interest rates. We can pay for these out of SLOST and then have to pay for them all up front at once. I know our financial department was going to reach out with an RFP for the different rates that would be available so that we could consider the purchase. We do have the funds available in SLOST, but we prefer not to use them at one time. But this would give us the ability to get these two ambulances on the way in October. So in order to open up the forefront discussion, first I will ask for a motion for approval of the purchase. Do you have my motion, sir? Motion. Do I have a second? I'll second it. All right. So now, discussion about the dump. This one is a different brand than what we've done historically. It is because their availability, the others would not be available for several more months. We have reached the situation where we're at, I hate to use the term emergency, but we have been using backup spare ambulances due to transition and other things that are starting to wear out. Our fleet, the new, two newest in our fleet for 2018.
The newest ambulance is better, 2018.
Yeah. So we have two 2018s. The ones before that are older than that, and so they've started having some weird tear. This gives us the ability, we did approve a purchase of two that have been on order for quite some time, and they will be in '25 when we receive those. That will have four or five primary that will then be up and then that gets us on rotation to start trying to rotate those in instead of waiting. So we're in a situation where they're all wearing them. Any other questions during the discussion? With that, all in favor? None opposed, that motion kicks. Fun, we should have just did a fake vote just to see if the fire chief fell out of his chair and everybody said no.
I wouldn't have done that. I wouldn't have done that.
It would have been very, very wrong to do so. Next item on the agenda is the consideration and approval of a payoff of the chief alone on the airport wood station. Sewer wood station? Airport, the sewer wood station was installed three years ago and has been in place, it's not been tied on yet. not been tied on yet because it's not been signed over. The new hangars and terminal has not been constructed. Now one of the hangars is going to be under construction and the terminal is about to be under construction. In order to move on to the next item on the agenda, we would need to pay this off in order to sign it over to the City of Jasper so that it can be brought into their sewer system. The total payoff amount is $256,282.21. That would be out of our capital improvement fund where that purchase would be, the payoff would be in place. So first, I would like to ask for approval from the board for the county to go ahead and make that final payment, take those, that loan off in order to make that available.
So.
Second. Second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor? Next item would be the consideration to authorize the chairman to sign necessary documents to transfer the ownership of the airport sewer lift station to the City of Jasper. Once that payoff has been made to GFA, we would then have the ability to sign that over to the City of Jasper. They would produce the documents from their meeting to what's that. So I would like to ask for authorization for chair to sign the documents necessary to sign that over.
So.
Second. Any discussion or questions on that? All in favor? Next item on the agenda is the consideration and approval of capital improvement special district ordinance. That's the ordinance that we had the public hearing on earlier. It's also one that we had two other meetings on prior to. So I know that you've had a chance to review the, each draft as they came through. If you have had a chance and feel comfortable with the approval of that ordinance, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the ordinance of the creation. Wait, I'll read.
Speed hump first.
Well, maybe, you know, if y'all want to follow the order that Tommy James tried to find the bouncing around a little bit. So, sorry. Let me go back. Hold that thought on that particular item, and we will move back and then we'll get the consideration and approval of the speed hump implementation policy. We've been working with the road department, trying to establish a, a policy and procedure for the request of speed humps in subdivisions. We've also had, I think, two separate work sessions with discussions on the topic. You've got a copy of that policy and have had a chance, I believe, to review it. It follows a similar percentage of 80%, with the petitions of an 80% of the residents affected would have to agree to that and the same in order for removal of that. So with that, do I have a motion to approve the policy, the speed hump policy for an accurate speed hump?
So.
Second. Second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor? None opposed? Now we'll move on to the consideration and approval of capital improvement special district ordinance. This is the one that we discussed just a second ago. You do have that in front of you. I know that each of you have had a chance to review and go through and speak to your constituents, just the neighborhoods that have been affected. So I would like to entertain a motion for the approval of the ordinance of the Board of Commissioners to amend the code of ordinance as Pickens County to provide and process its petition to consider the creation of a special capital improvements district in order to undertake and front qualified capital improvement projects within the districts.
So.
Second. Move in a second. Any discussion or questions? With that, all in favor? I think you're big, you can all come through. One question. I know what I did there. Next item on our agenda is our action items. First set is to approve minutes. We do have a couple of different sets of minutes. I know that our clerk was, was complaining about how many minutes she had with the number of minutes that she was preparing. But the first is the regular meeting minutes from July 15th. I know a copy of each of these was provided in your packet for you to review. Hopefully you've had a chance to review. And if so, I'd like to call for a motion to approve the minutes for regular meeting on July 15th.
So.
Second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor? None opposed? Next set of minutes for approval is the executive session minutes from July the 15th. I had a chance to review those as well. If there are no questions, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve those.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor? Next set of minutes was for a called meeting on July the 26th, 2024, for view approval of the IGA and requests for a T-SLOSS item to go on the ballot. Do I have a motion for approval of those minutes?
So.
Second. Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Next set is an executive session on July the 26th, 2024. And those executive session minutes were in your packet as well. Do I have a motion to approve the executive session minutes from July 26th?
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion? All in favor? In the next set of minutes is our work session minutes from August the 5th. Our work session itself on August the 5th, those minutes were in your packet as well. Do I have a motion to?
So.
Second. Second. Any discussion or questions?
I'll make a motion that we do all these. We got both of this motion first.
But I'm always afraid one of us missed a meeting and then they, they would be voting on an item that they were not present at, but we were all at every one of these. So, all right. Any other discussion? All in favor? That does get time to say. All right. We'll move into our rezones, the request for land use changes. We do have a couple of those tonight. The first one on the agenda is from JTF Holdings. It's rezon 1906842811, or less than Highway 108. It's a request to move a 45 acre parcel from Ag to Highway Business, parcel number 064066. The Planning and Development Office received a request on March 28th from the owner, Mr. Jay Fender, on behalf of JTF Holdings. Requesting this change, the intended purpose of the rezon, if approved, was to sell the property for the development of a commercial business park. Public hearing was held on May the 13th regarding application, at which the planning commission voted 5 in favor, 0 opposed, to recommend approval of the rezon request. With that, do I have a motion to approve or deny?
A motion to approve.
Okay. Motion in a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor? None opposed. That motion carries. Next item was actually withdrawn. It made it onto the agenda, so we left it on here so that it would be visible for everyone to see. But Mr. Hollifield did withdraw his request to move from R to S or from Green to Road. So we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. That is RZ 190716, Mr. Charles Houghton. His address is 119 Inland Drive. A request to move from agriculture to rural residential, a six acre, six acre portion of 36.6 acre tract, parcel 001001007. The application was filed on May the 28th from Mr. Houghton requesting the, this change, the intended purpose of the rezon request if approved was to split the six acres into two three acre tracts for rezon. Public hearing was held on the 8th day of July, where the planning commission voted for yes, 0 no to recommend approval of the rezon. Do I have a motion?
As well, Mr. Houghton can, he agreed that we're going to make a motion to change it from AG to ER.
So the motion is to move to ER instead of R.
Yes. I'll second that motion.
So I have a motion in a second. Do I have any discussion or questions?
Appreciate you working with us.
With that, all in favor? None opposed. That motion carries. Next on our list is RZ 190717, a request from Mr. Curtis Roper at 580 Eagle Bridge Road. It's a request to move a 6.23 acre portion of a 19.6 acre tract from Ag to rural residential on parcel 069027003. Application was filed on May the 29th. The intended purpose of the rezon request was to sell 6.23 acres to an individual to construct a single family dwelling. The public hearing was held on July the 8th, where the planning commission voted for yes, 0 no to approve the recommendation of this property move. With that, do I have a motion for?
A motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Any discussion or questions? Then all in favor? None opposed. Motion carries. Next item is a rezon request from Mr. Sean Noe with RZ 190718 at 356 Drop Shot Drive to request to move a 5.57 acre tract from Ag to rural residential on parcel 045073016. The application was filed on May the 31st, and the intended purpose of the rezon request, if approved, was to construct an additional single family dwelling. The public hearing was held on July the 8th, where the planning commission voted for yes, 0 no to recommend approval of this 5.57 acre tract taped on this parcel. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second motion.
In a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor? None opposed. That motion carries. The next is a request that we heard during the public hearing at the beginning of this meeting, RZ 190751 from 1823 LLC, Brian Armour. It's Longbridge Road. A request to move a 92.51 acre tract from urban residential to a state residential. Heard earlier, his intended purpose. So with that, do I have a motion?
A motion to approve.
Second. Motion in a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor? None opposed. With that, I'd like to open up for any guest comments. Guest comments? No guest comments, then I'd like to open up the floor for a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing the purchase or lease of property and to consult me with legal counsel concerning the potential litigation.
So.
Second. Second. Any discussion? All in favor? With that, we will move to executive session. Y'all, you're welcome to stay and go back out. Yes. They didn't hit follow-up letter up to you. Okay. The advertisement didn't go into the paper, so we had to table it till our next meeting. So we will have that at our meeting in September. We will have it on the agenda in our meeting in September. It requires the letter, the sign, and advertisements to go in the paper for two weeks, and the ad didn't make it to the paper. I know that they reached out to everyone that they could reach out to to try to, but for some reason, it may not, postal service may have prevented it. So it will be on the agenda in September.
This section of road back in the early 2000s, I've read with Joey Lau, a place with a chest name of D O T, and Alan Tobo with Montana Man Land Company.
Right. And I, I'm not trying to cut you off, but in order to legally discuss it and have a public hearing about it, we have to have that as part of the advertisement. So it will be, it will be on the agenda at our September meeting, and that's the whole public hearing is for you to be able to come and discuss it. But I've got to make sure it gets advertised before we have the hearing to discuss it. So, yeah, you're welcome to come. And if you want to meet with staff between now and then, we'll be happy to talk. But in order to conduct the public hearing, I'm going to make sure that we do get it advertised correctly. So we'll have it at our meeting in September. And then anytime between now and then, if you want to reach out to me, I'll give you my, my contact info and we can, we can talk about it. Okay?
I guess I want to, oh, that's an accident. Was the petition, was it, is it approved? When I had the petition?
So the ordinance is approved. I will, I think I still have your contact number, and I can actually have staff reach out and give you how to make the formal recommendation. So we'll get to it.
Okay, I'm ready to get on it.
Yeah.
I'm ready to get on it.
We haven't got the ink signed, the drive on the paper yet, so we've got to get all the petition paperwork in place. But then, yeah, I'll make sure we reach out to you and get it.
Thank you all so much. Thank you.
Thank you.